Good evening. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, June 18, 2014, approximately 7:00 PM. Will you please join Councilwoman Deanan for a moment of silence and a pledge?
A moment of silence, please. Amen and the pledge.
[inaudible] 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 Thank you.
At this time, the floor is open for citizens' comments for non-agenda items.
Ron Drigoudis, resident, Satellite Beach, CRA resident. First, I'd like to make a request. We all know where Pelican Park is. We all know where the other parks are. And I'm sure most everyone here, sitting as citizens, board members, or even council members, have taken walks over there. One issue that comes to my mind is that, yes, I believe we are a dog-friendly community. Our dog, Zoe, passed away, who had multiple tickets on the beach while we owned, or rather, Dale owned, a piece of property there and still continues to own it. However, I want to bring to light that when people walk their dogs, we've addressed this issue on Casia. And we have the boxes and stations where people address these issues with the plastic baggies. And one of the things that is noticed is, when you walk through Pelican Park or other areas, perhaps there need to be a few more stations, especially in the park areas. There are morning walkers, evening walkers. Whether they adhere to attempting to utilize those facilities to assist them in collecting the excrement that eventually ends up in our lagoon, as has been stated, I think we need to take a look at that issue and address it. We have an ordinance in regards to dog excrement, but I think we need to facilitate it as a city and as a community for those people. And I'd just like management and the council to consider that at a future date, even though it may take some funding from the CRA. My next item of agenda is this. June 14th, an article comes out in Florida Today. And then it follows, another article comes out in the opinion section. And then just, I believe it was 57 minutes ago, about an hour ago, so that's about an hour, two hours, another article comes out in the opinion section. When I look at this, and council knows that I've been upset as a resident of the CRA. And I'm sure other residents know it too. And there are many residents in the CRA who started to think about this. And it comes and it goes. And now, when I read some very strong articles, one way or the other, I have a problem. And a lot of residents have a problem. You can call it what it is, wherever it is, it's been stated by some as looting. Or it's actually been stated by one person. And when you sit back and think about the A-1A project, all the monies that could have been utilized to increase this community and bring it up, and for residents in the CRA to pay a second time. I voiced my opinions in the past, and I've let it go. But I am not sure anymore about whether this was the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizens' comments are still open for non-agenda items. Here are none. Close the citizens' comments portion. Move on to Agenda Item 4, council comments. Who would like to start, please?
The Planning and Zoning Advisory Board meeting was canceled for this month. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
On Monday, the 9th, I went to a legislative update that was sponsored by Dean Mead up at the zoo. And Senator Altman and Representative Tom Goodson were there and briefed those that were present on some of the things that happened in the legislature this year. You know, one of the big things that was instrumental for us was the $20 million that the governor, the Senate and House approved, and the governor signed the bill for. $10 million of that $20 million is going to be dredging the O'Gally River to address the muck system, or the muck situation that's going on there. And there's another $10 million that's, you know, going to different projects that are going to be related to the Indian River Lagoon. And Tom Goodson made the remark that, you know, there's no short-term fix for this issue. This is an issue that took years for this stuff to accumulate, and it's probably going to take a while for it to get taken care of. But, you know, water is going to be a prime issue in the 2015 legislative session. And Steve Christofoli has more or less been tasked with that responsibility in the House. Also, on the 9th, I attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting, and Mark Breimer was the guest speaker, along with our fire chief, Don Hughes, in his presentation on the CFAL and the fall prevention success that we've had here in Satellite Beach. And there are other cities who have, over the years, come to us and are modeling their programs after ours because of the success we had. So, you know, I just want to, you know, thank Mark for the effort that he's put into it and our city staff, along with the fire department, you know, to make this program something that is viable, not only in our city, but across the state and outside of the state. So, you know, it's been a great success. Definitely, the visitation program that they've implemented prevents repeat calls for people who have been frequent callers of the fire department. And instead of us having to go out and respond to a 9/11 call, we're going out there on a proactive basis, addressing needs on a regular basis with these individuals that we know are out there. And it works. On the 14th, I attended the Flag Day, initial putting up of the flags, and we do that for 21 days, leading up to July 4th. And Richard Pank and the VFW have been so kind as to step in for Scotty Culp and put the flags up, like Scotty always did. So, I was there that morning. And that morning also, I attended the keeper of our beautiful beach cleanup with Ethan Shoda, who is the young man that we presented an award to at the last meeting. Ethan does a great job of coordinating. There had to be 45 people there that morning, working at Pelican Beach Park. And, you know, I want to just say that I understand the dog waste stations that we can probably put there. But I walked the green area of Pelican Beach Park twice, once this past Saturday, and once a month and a half ago, or a month ago, when Ethan did the last one. And I don't see a lot of evidence that people are not picking up after their animals at Pelican Beach Park. But I do think that we probably should, you know, be looking at providing bags there if that's what needs to be done to assist them. And also, on Monday, this past Monday, the Florida League of Cities advocacy team, which I am a member of, met here in Satellite Beach and basically set plans for next year, went over what we did this year, and look forward to doing good things again for our, not only Satellite Beach, but for our communities here in Brevard County. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mark?
Other than Dom, thank you for those comments. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Just a few things. Some of you, I can see Dana in the audience, the governor made a surprise visit here a couple Fridays ago to support small businesses. I was invited to attend, but unfortunately, due to my work schedule, I couldn't attend. And then he actually had lunch at one of the local businesses. So, he was in town for a few hours, supporting small businesses, and that's a great thing and a great endeavor. Also got to attend the Little League Championship for the juniors, and A New York Pizza won. There's a little guy on that team named Damon Deanan. So, they did win the championship this year. And also, with respect to the dog stations, because I've attended so many baseball games and do get to walk my dog around the tennis courts, there's a problem also with the dog issue around the tennis courts. And I think we might need to look into dog stations around the tennis courts as well. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. I also attended the Space Coast League of Cities. And Mark, thank you very much, very good presentation. On sad note, Ed Raines, mayor and city councilman in Satellite Beach, passed away Monday. And his service, the visitation and service, is tomorrow, June 19th, 2:00 to 4:00, at Trinity Wellspring Church, which is 638 South Patrick Drive in Satellite Beach. And the service will begin at 4:00. And that's all I have to say. At this time, Courtney, I think time Pacific, you wouldn't have time to complete your report, so we will come back to you. At this time, I'd like to welcome Dana Blickley, a Brevard County property appraiser, who will give us a presentation. Welcome.
Can I remove this? I'd rather not have my back to the citizens as well, so I'm going to kind of stand over here. Well, thank you for inviting me. We did get some information from you in terms of what you were looking for, for us to provide for this presentation today, but I threw in some other information, a couple of the slides we may glide over pretty quickly. And at the end, if you have questions on something that we've covered, or something you'd like to ask, be happy to entertain those. I will be succinct, and appreciation for your schedule. So, again, thank you for having us here. I do have a couple of our staff here. I have our chief deputy property appraiser, which is George Massolino, here. And Rob Felton is here. He's our director of governmental affairs and public relations. So, thank you very much for joining us. We're going to start with, what does the property appraiser do? And I know probably everybody sitting up here knows exactly what the property appraiser does, and we interact at certain times of the year for information that you have to provide to us, or that we provide to you specifically in the budget process when you're developing your plan. But many folks don't realize what we do 365 days a year, and it's more than just appraising property. But we can break it down in elementary to say, discover list and value. And that's basically what we're doing 365 days out of the year. Discovering property through means for which it's created. So, if someone buys a piece of property, say they have a 10-acre parcel, and they buy five acres from someone, then we may cut that parcel out and create it. We discover that through documents that are filed through the clerk of the circuit court that come to us by virtue of creating parcels of record. We, of course, once we find those through the clerk's office, we have to list those and provide a legal description for them, to be able to list them in the form of an assessment roll. And of course, we do value every piece of property in Brevard County. Okay, Rob? Now, I'm not going to read this slide to you, but if you'll just pay attention to the yellow sentence right there in the middle, this is what I would like to convey to you that is most important, and probably the biggest misconception about what property appraisers do throughout the state. So, most importantly, the property appraiser does not create value. Okay? So, Dana Blickley doesn't decide what the value of your property is going to be. Buyers and sellers do that. So, as properties are transacted in the marketplace, and buyers and sellers are buying property and exchanging property, we study those transactions every day, 365 days out of the year. We're getting that information, and we're churning that, and we're qualifying those sales to determine if they meet an arms-length transaction status. So, there's nothing atypical about that, and whether or not that sale represents market value or market prices, and we should keep that in determining what our market rates are. So, in layman's terms, if I decide to sell my property to my brother, okay, that's not considered an arms-length transaction. It probably isn't going to bring market price. It's probably going to bring something different because of the related parties. So, that's a transaction, once we qualify that, would determine that it's not arms-length, and we would not use that sale in the mix, if you will, to determine what market rates are for that year. This is a very interesting slide, and I like to bring this in every presentation that I do. If you'll take a look, this is a graph of property values and sales per year, okay? From 1999 to 2013, 2014 isn't on there yet. The circle in the blue represents what we all know as the bubble. Okay? Those were the years in which you were seeing 30% and 40% percentage changes in property values throughout the state, throughout the country. And we now know that that's an artificial inflation of values. It's not sustainable, okay? What you typically see, and if you look at that ratio between sale price and growth, typically you see about a 4% growth in the aggregate. Now, this is all property in Brevard County aggregated. Typically see about a 4% growth. So, if I were to draw a trend line from the beginning of 1999, and it represented a 4% trend, and you got all the way to 2013, you can see what the market did. It corrected itself. Okay? So, I just always think that that's a very interesting slide to see. Any questions on that? Now, this information is countywide. This is not specific to the city of Satellite Beach, although I do have some information and they're specific to the city. So, for 2012, we saw about 20,000 permits. This is permit information. For 2013, about 15,000, and for 2014, there are a little over 11,000 permits. Of those totals, approximately 2,450 permits were for single-family townhouse or half-duplex, which is what we would consider single-family. And then there's a breakdown by year. 716 of those were for 2012, a little over 1,000 for 2013. And to date, about 670-plus permits are for 2014, for tax year 2014. Where are homes being built? These percentages haven't changed for a while. If you'll notice, of the property values for the single-family category that we're talking about, in 2012, about 33% of those were built in the Vieira Suntree area, 27% in Melbourne, and about 14% were in Palm Bay, Port Malabar area. You can see in 2013, which are the statistics we use, you know, the market activity, the sales activity, the new construction activity that happened in 2013 are what your 2014 values are based on. And if you'll take a look at there, those percentages are pretty much well the same. Now, that doesn't mean that the other areas didn't experience some type of growth or permitting. It just means this is the bulk of the building. Okay? Where you generally see some trusses laying on the ground are these areas. One of the questions I get often are, what are front homes being built? And yes, there's a few, not as many as we've seen in other times. But for the 2013 year, for the 2014 assessment year, we saw 34 rear-front homes permitted and built, four oceanfront and 13 canal. And I went ahead and threw the golf course in, about 21 were constructed on the golf course. Almost all of those were in District 4 in the Vieira Suntree area. So, that gets down to brass tacks in terms of how many are out there. Not a lot. Now, this is a hard slide to see, but I went ahead and threw this in. These are aggregated values for districts, all of the municipalities and the counties at the top. So, starting from the left to right, you have the district, the jurisdiction, Brevard County, and all of our municipalities listed. We have the 2013 final values, so that was after the Value Adjustment Board had completed whatever changes they brought to the table for that tax year. What the 2014 preliminary values are, those are the values that we're getting ready to hand over to the taxing authorities, so they can start their budget hearings and budget process. And to the far right are the percentage changes in the taxable values from 13 to 14. So, again, these are taxable values. So, this is the value represented after all exemption and assessment caps have been applied. One thing that looks a little different in this slide, if you study these types of numbers or statistics, is typically, Brevard County does not have quite the high aggregated change that you see this year. Typically, the beachside communities will have a bigger change, percentage change in value from one year to the other. But what does Brevard County have in it this year that is new, that would make that figure much larger? And Courtney, you don't get to answer. Rob cheated. The new power plant is in there. So, the new power plant, FPNL, that went on the roll for the first time this year, will probably be, well, I know for Dana Blickley's career, will be the largest single parcel value property put on the roll. And that's about $792 million for this year. So, $792 million. So, that typically, you would see that figure be somewhere around, given those numbers, about 6%. And you can see that's inflated at, you know, about two points for this year. Now, Satellite Beach, that information specifically to your city, this is a 10-year, actually 11-year table, if you will, of a breakdown of market values. Now, market value is synonymous with just value. That's before any exemption or assessment cap is applied. So, those represent what we value in terms of sale prices, less cost of sale. Not to confuse anybody, but when property transacts between buyers and sellers, there are always fees or monies paid that do not represent the bricks and the mortar and the land, and we have to take those out. So, once we do that, these are the numbers that represent those transactions, if you will, per year. So, you can see 2003, all the way to the right is the total value, I'm sorry, in the middle, would be the total value for the city, the total assessments, okay? This figure here. You start in 2003, you're at $761 million, and you can see we're now at $1.1 billion for the city. That's a preliminary number. To the right of that is a percentage change from the previous year. And then I threw in an exempt value. Now, keep in mind that that could be exempt or immune from taxation, so if there were federal properties in there, or state and local-owned properties, those are in there as well. And then the far right gives you a percentage of the total to tell you how much actually is not on the roll as a result of being immune or exempt from taxation. So, those are the numbers that you guys would see. It will not be on your 420 because you just get taxable information there. But if you asked us for just values, that's the information that you would see for your city. This is the same information, but it is taxable value. So, it is after all exemptions or assessment caps have been applied, specifically for the city of Satellite Beach. Again, from 2003, started at about $500 million, and you guys are sitting at about $696 million for this year, for your total taxable value for the city. New construction, not quite as good as some of your previous years, but it's there, 2.8 for this year. And your percentage change from 2013 is, you know, just under 7%. Any questions on that, council? No? Cheryl had called and asked us for this information, and I hope that I represented what you were conveying to us. This is a pie chart, if you will, of your single-family residential properties in the city of Satellite Beach by location. And what we did is we broke out oceanfront, riverfront, canalfront, and anything that is not influenced by those other three classifications. Okay? So, we're going to call those inside lots. So, if you are a single-family residential property, you're not on a canal, you're not on the river, you're not in the ocean, then you're in that last category. If you look at the bottom, at the charts there, at the pie, you can see about 78% -- again, the left side is market value before any exemptions, the right is taxable. Almost 80% of your residential property value is derived from properties that do not have water influence. Okay? About 2% are oceanfront, about 4% is riverfront, and about 16% are canalfront. Okay? On the right is that same information in terms of taxable value, not much difference in your allocation there. And I gave you, you know, if you're a statistics girl or gal, guy or gal, you'll appreciate maybe some of the other information. I give you some percentage changes there in your taxable value and the total count for the number of lots that that represents, or properties. Any questions on that? Here is just some value history on taxable value. This is aggregated taxable value for the Satellite Beach CRA. The base year, the year in which it was created, actually, the base year is the year before that it's created. So, the base year is 2001, started out with a base value of about $124 million. You can see for 2014, preliminarily, the taxable value for the district's going to be about $220 million. All the way right represents your percentage change from year to year. Again, the bubble years and the crash, you can see on the chart there, starting with 2006 until about 2011. Any questions there? Three quick bits of information, maybe you're aware of this, maybe you're not. There were -- we all know when we went to vote last time, our ballots were, what, 57 pages long, I think? And out of all those amendments, there were three that were successful that affected property taxes. So, these were the three that were successful. The first one was veterans disability due to combat injury for homestead or property discounts. And basically, this was a cleanup amendment, and it deleted the requirement that veterans had to be a Florida resident at the time that they entered the service. So, if you happen to be a veteran, and you did not ever make an application for this exemption, you think you might have qualified, we encourage you to come and see us to make sure that you're receiving that benefit if you're qualified for that. So, we had about 137 veterans in Brevard that benefited from this change. So, that was great to see. Go ahead, Rob. The next one was Amendment 9, and this was a homestead property tax exemption for surviving spouses of military veterans or first responders. This gives you some information there on the qualifying. It defined what the first responder and what line of duty meant, and also gave you some information on what you had to qualify, and also the fact that this is also, is aired to the surviving spouse. Okay? And next one? The last amendment that was successful was an additional homestead tax exemption for seniors. This particular one is specified as a local option, meaning that municipalities and taxing authorities alike would have to adopt this, okay? And so far, we don't have any municipalities or the county that's adopted this last exemption. E-Trem. Probably not too many folks in the audience know what E-Trem is, but certainly you folks do. I hope it is working well for you. It does make somewhat of an arduous process, much more resistant to errors. So, basically, when we used to hand you a piece of paper and say, okay, go through all these permutations, and send it back to us, and don't make any mistakes, because you don't want the Trem folks to come down here and smack you for that. We give you that information electronically. Basically, you only have to fill out two pieces. Tell us what your proposed rate is, and tell us when your meeting date and time is. Everything else we kind of do for you. So, we're hoping that works well for you. We certainly feel that it's a much better process than old paper and pen and abacus Only time I'm going to read to you. This is the mission of the property appraisers' office. The Brevard County Property Appraisers' Office strives to be the best in the state of Florida at producing an accurate, equitable, and uniform assessment roll. We are committed to excellence in property valuation, providing quality, professional customer service, and performing those duties at the lowest cost to taxpayers. Above all, we welcome every opportunity to serve the people of Brevard County. One of the things that I really want to stress to folks, when we come out and have an opportunity to speak to citizens, is to let you guys know, there's just a myriad of different property tax exemptions and caps that apply to our property tax process now. And I can tell you, when I was applying for this job and knocking on so many doors, I ran into so many folks that were longtime Brevard residents that didn't even know what a homestead exemption was. And that's just a painful thing to find out when you're talking to folks. So, please check our website regularly. All of these exemptions and property taxes, portability, all of those types of things that you may benefit from are all on there. We always bring some brochures over here on the table for different types of exemptions or property caps or explanations to folks. I know that the property tax equation is much more difficult now than it used to be. We are always available to answer those questions for you if you have them. Again, I hope I've brought the information you guys were looking for, and I'll open it up for questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. What we'll do first, I'll bring it since it's a council, Agenda Item, I'll bring it to council for any questions, and then we'll open it up for public.
Sure.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, Dana, I get a question all the time about the property that was annexed up north. What are some of the exemptions? And what are some of the scenarios with the annexed property where revenue could be coming in to the city? coming in to the city?
Are you talking--
And I'm not sure I'm using the right word, exemption. The property that was annexed up north, we get no tax revenue from that property, so...
Are you talking about the military housing?
Yes.
Yeah, that's exempt, yes.
And what are some scenarios where it would no longer be exempt, or is it always going to be exempt?
Well, I can't tell you that it's always going to be exempt. You know, things change, just like the South Patrick housing that changed from being, you know, governmentally run to the private sector. So, there's a two-prong test that always has to be met, is ownership and use. So, if it's owned by the government, used by the government for a purpose that otherwise the government would be doing, then typically is exempt, okay? But that can change. And it's always on a yearly basis. So, your legal assessment date on January 1st dictates everything, not only value but exempt status as well.
Further questions from council? Okay. At this time, open up for public comment or questions.
Yeah, I just had a comment.
Please.
I just wanted to say what a great job you guys are doing. Prior to Dana coming on board, we used to actually have to call and beg for early assessments, and we would never get them early. And we would beg, literally. And since you've been on board, we get them. Honestly, I will start thinking about calling you, and then I'll get the email. It's really that as fast as we could ever expect, and it makes our budgeting process so much easier and so much more accurate, and we really appreciate it. So, I just wanted--
No problem. And, you know, we will always push information out as soon as we can. You know, we never give it to you before. It's intelligent, okay? So, we certainly don't want to give you early data that is bad, okay? Garbage in, garbage out. So, where we will never withhold the information, we won't release it until, you know, it's a pretty intelligent figure. And we try to get it to the point where we know that anything else that we're doing would probably be in addition to, you know, than the reverse of that, because we know that you're starting with those figures with your planning process. And where we don't have anything to do with your budget process and your plan for your city, we certainly play a role in making sure that we can get you information as soon as possible so you can make good decisions for your citizens. So, we're happy to be able to do that. We do have a lot of changes going on in the property appraisers office. We've changed just about everything that we do, how we do it, the tools we're using, a lot of technological changes, a lot of operational changes that are going on right now. One of the things that you will be seeing in the future is a much more interactive website. And although we boast a great website and we know that we push out a lot of information on it, it's not as interactive as it will be. So, eventually, at some point, anything that you can walk into one of our offices and do, you'll be able to do sitting in front of your computer. So, if you own a business and you file a tangible personal property tax return, you'll be able to file that, you know, at home. When you're making an application for an exemption or a portability application, or you've had a life event change and you qualify for some other type of exemption, you'll be able to make that application, you know, through the internet, through your home computer, and actually submit your documents electronically to us. So, we're real excited about that. We're hoping that that'll be the case next year. It's an aggressive goal, but we're hoping we'll get there. And again, we look forward to continuing to serve you. If you have questions, once I leave today, we're going to leave some information here. My card's on the table. We're going to also leave some of the brochures that we brought today. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, the public comment is open.
I have one question.
Um, excuse me.
My name is Dale Abrams--
No, no. Dale, excuse me. You need to come up to the podium, please.
Dale Abrams, citizen of Satellite Beach. Where does your funding come from? Who funds the property appraisers?
The county. It's all funded locally.
Okay.
And it's a P-commissioned office based on the percentage of property taxes collected. About 86% to 88% of it is funded through the general fund in the county.
Okay. Thank you. Further comments? Here are none. Public comments closed on this agenda item. Dana, thank you very, very much for the presentation, and thank you for working with us. At this time, moving on to Agenda Item 5, which we skipped, City Manager's Report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a University of Florida and Brevard County workshop called My Brevard Fertilizer Workshop for the Protection of the Indian River Lagoon. That will be held tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:00, so if you're interested in that, you can register for that with the Brevard University of Florida extension. And we provide the website in my report. You can also get that website from the Recreation Department's website. I included in my report some informational items regarding a public safety communications tower requested by Brevard County, which is being approved by the city of Indian Harbor Beach within their -- I can never say this park's name.
Algonquin.
I'm sorry. Algonquin?
Algonquin.
Sports complex. This communications tower will benefit both of our cities. The requested tower is a monopole, and it's proposed to be 250 feet in height. And I have included a, basically, engineering report that was completed by the engineer that's proposing this tower. It's provided some pictures so you could see the impact visually from certain streets in Indian Harbor Beach. And then they also included a plan of Indian Harbor Beaches for future soccer fields, which they basically approved the position of the tower around. The city has really no impact or any decisions we have. We don't have any impact on any decision regarding the tower, but it was nice that the city of Indian Harbor Beach contacted us to let us know this was going in. And we sent this throughout our staff to determine if there was any safety issues, and we could not identify any, so... I have included a 2014 legislative update in your packet. There's three bills that I thought had some impact on the city. The first was related to the local regulations for short-term vacation rentals. I think all local governments were hoping that the preemption of being able to locate or regulate short-term rentals would go away. That didn't happen. The state, what they did was continue to prohibit the ability to regulate the duration or frequency of vacation rentals, but did remove the preemption to allow local governments to regulate the impacts. So, a local government could regulate the impacts of parking, excess parking, or noise or anything like that. We do have regulations for short-term rentals that were adopted in 2007, so we are grandfathered in. So, unfortunately, we would never be able to change that regulation if we wanted to, because if we did, we wouldn't be able to regulate them after that until they changed that preemption. Senate Bill 374 was related to revising restrictions on referendums for comp plan amendments and map amendments. And this specifically requires that, basically, the state of Florida is starting to prohibit any local referendums that impact development orders in their entirety. And comprehensive plan amendments are broadly considered a development order, but they specifically mention that in this particular bill. Senate Bill 846 is actually probably the one that impacts us the most. Beginning in January 2015, elected municipal officers would also have to obtain four hours of Ethics and Sunshine Law training on an annual basis. And this is in addition to the law that passed last year that required county officials and constitutional officers to do the same. So, there's some other information regarding conflicts and voting conflicts. So, because of the extensive nature of the bill, I will go ahead and get that sent out to you so you can see all of the requirements, because it is broader than just the ethics training. But when we get to that point, we'll go ahead and start scheduling that. I wanted to remind you that we are holding a capital improvements workshop on June 25th at 7:00 PM, and we will be discussing the capital improvement plan priorities during this workshop, and we're also going to review Stormwater Utility Fund at the same time. I did want to let you know that Commissioner Mary Bowlin Lewis has appointed one of our residents, Martha Kirby, to the Space Coast Tourism Development Council's Beach Development and Restoration Committee. This is the committee that discusses beach re-nourishment projects, grant opportunities, and other beach development issues. It's a pretty important committee, so it was kind of nice to see one of our residents appointed to that. At the June 4th SEDIC Council meeting, I did get a request regarding an ordinance for political signs. We are going to schedule this item for your consideration on July 16th at your next council meeting. I also had, I also indicated that I'd have an update on this public records request, but I talked to this resident, and I think we're going to try to work that out before we bring it back to you. So, hopefully, we'll get a resolution without having to bother you. And that's all I have. No action items.
Thank you. Courtney, on our workshop on the 25th, what do you need from us between now and then to help that workshop along?
I don't think I really need, if you wanted to send in your broad priorities, that might help us out. We can maybe place some of our capital improvements that, you know, needs that the staff has identified into those broad categories. That might help you prioritize a little bit better. But we will be presenting a capital improvement plan very similar to your plan in the budget, but it's growing. So, that's why we're having to meet with you, because there's, you know, limited funding, and we need to know what your priorities are to budget accordingly. And then also with the Stormwater Utility, we'll be providing a pretty in-depth presentation on that. So, I don't think we really need much from you on that. But if you would like to send your broad categories for priorities, that would help.
Okay. Any questions for the city manager with her report? Okay, here are none. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, Discuss, Take Action on Ordinance Number 1093. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1093, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Section 34-32, stopping standing or parking prohibited in certain areas or spaces. To prohibit certain activities in certain parking lots, accepting permitted mobile food vending at Pelican Beach Park from prohibition, providing for establishment of application and permit requirements by resolution, providing for severability, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance Number 1093.
Thank you.
Move to adopt ordinance 1093 on first reading.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Scott. I have a second by Councilman Montanaro, excuse me.
I have, I have just--
Further council comments?
Yeah, are we specifically limiting this to Pelican Beach Park? Or, you know, do we want to look at High Tower as a possibility?
Yeah, we just wanted to do this at Pelican Beach Park initially. I don't think, High Tower doesn't really have the room for that type of use.
Questions on this agenda item before I open up for public comment? At this time, opening up Agenda Item 7 for public comment. Here are none. Bring it back to council. We have a motion, a question quick. You're going to come up, Carrie, with the set of regulations--
Yes, I'm moving on that now.
Okay. Thank you.
So, by your second reading, you'll also have a resolution adopting the application with additional requirements, as well as the fee for the application.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any further comments from council?
That'll have all the criteria in it for--
Yeah, the additional criteria. What we wanted to do is we wanted to make sure that we could change the criteria quickly if we needed to and not have to go through a whole ordinance to do that.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. Lenore?
Assistant Board?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Assistant Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Assistant Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. Carrie, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, Discuss, Take Action on the amended interlocal agreement with Brevard County School Board. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. In 2008, all local governments of Brevard County, including ours, excluding communities that met exemption requirements for school concurrency, as well as the Brevard County School Board and Brevard County, entered into an interlocal agreement to implement school concurrency. And this was in reaction to Senate Bill, or I think it was Senate Bill 360, right? Which basically required school concurrency. Since then, school concurrency is no longer a state requirement. But most of the local governments of Brevard County still feel that we need school concurrency to continue good planning and make sure that our schools are built concurrent with growth in our community. So, this, basically, this document not only regulates school concurrency, but it also regulates other aspects of school facility planning, such as school closures, redistricting, and looking at the five-year capital facilities work plan to make sure that the communities agree where the school board's planning for growth. It talks about population projections and how we come up with that, or, I'm sorry, student enrollment projections and so on. We've been negotiating this agreement for the past two years. In the past two years, as you recall, the school closures, there were some, two lawsuits, one with Brevard County, one with Titusville, and then Coko, the city of Coker intervened. This agreement is part of that settlement, as well as some results of the Capitol Outlet Committee members changing things that we've learned through the past. So, we feel that we've made it a little bit more efficient in that we had eliminated some requirements that we didn't think were very necessary, since we've been working through this agreement since 2008. So, I described some of those streamlined procedures in my report. I don't know if you want me to go through what those are. If you do, I'd be glad to, but otherwise, we are recommending approval of the agreement. All of the CO, Community Outlet Committee, which represents all of the participating local governments in school concurrency, unanimously recommended approval for this agreement.
Thank you very much. Council comments? Floor is open. Excuse me.
Just one comment. I remember a few years back when it was the recommendation from the comp board to remove concurrency from the comprehensive plan, and I'm really glad that we kept it in the comprehensive plan because of the situation, so that's all.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Here are none. At this time, I open up Agenda Item 8 for public comment. Here are none. Back to council, do a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised interlocal agreement for public school facility planning and school concurrency.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, a second by Councilman Brymer. Any further discussion from council? Here are none. Lenore?
Assistant Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Assistant Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Assistant Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Assistant Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five, nothing. Courtney, thank you for working on this. I know we sat in a couple meetings together on this, and thank you very much. Things important for us. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 9, Discuss, Take Action on Annual Evaluation of City Manager. Courtney?
Thank you. Previous meetings, I had included the, some information on the evaluations that I received at the time under my report. There was been discussion from some of the community members to include this as an agenda item, so that's what I did. And I included the evaluations for everybody's review. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any council comments?
I have to say that in all my years, it's the first time I've ever been mentioned in someone else's evaluation. Not just once, but three times. We've all heard the saying that we're all entitled to our own opinion, but we're not entitled to our own facts. And Councilwoman Deanan's evaluation has made several misstatements of fact that were not expressed as opinions, but were as expressed as facts about the city. And we have a policy that we will correct misstatements of fact about our city. So, I would like to do that now. In one place, this evaluation says the only reason that we entered into that agreement with the county was to try to avoid a lawsuit.
No, this is a point of order. Point of order.
She has the floor.
Point of order.
Ted, what do you want?
My evaluation is my opinion, so it's a point of order. I--
I'm going to let her have the floor. Thank you. Continue, please.
The agreement with the county was entered into as a means for us to collect funds to put into our empty, at the time, empty reserves, and that was the purpose. There's a statement that says, "My items are dismissed," simply refuses to answer questions or put items I request on the agenda. Agenda Item Number 6 in today's meeting was the councilwoman's request. The statement is made, "The city will have to raise taxes or assessments if we are going to conduct projects in the next two years or five years in the CRA." That statement is false. Those projects have already been funded, and they are going to appear in the FY15-16 budget. The statement says that the police RMS purchase was state-mandated, yet Brevard and Indian Harbor Beach do not have, so no tie-in. That statement is misleading. The state does require jurisdictions to have a records management system, but it does not require that a specific system has to be purchased. Brevard and Indian Howard Beach have their own different kind of records management system. And the one that we got was one that's actually being used by most of the jurisdictions in Brevard County, which makes it much easier for us to coordinate with them. The statement is that Public Works is understaffed. That statement is false. Public Works, I believe, is the only department that has all of its authorized positions filled. It's a statement about Brenda Raver saying that she deserved the same benefits as others whose jobs were not budgeted. That's misleading. The fact is that Ms. Raver got all of the benefits that she was qualified for. And then we get into some statements about me. CW got drafts and prepares most of the agenda items and support docs. That statement is false. The staff drafts and prepares all of the agenda items for our meetings, except for things like the handbook that I'm working on for city boards, which the council has given its blessing to. Again, needs prof, I guess that's professional staff to create agenda items to avoid future conflicts of interest with councilperson preparing docs, i.e. CW got, who prepared multiple docs and has voted on them. Accusing me in a public document of a conflict of interest is a serious matter, and that does need to be straightened out. When I work on a document in any fashion that has absolutely nothing to do with me personally, there is no way that a conflict of interest can occur. Furthermore, if I work on a document, or if any of us work on a document, we are all required to vote up or down on it. To fail to do so would be violating Florida Statute Two-Eight-Six Point Zero-One-Two and Florida Statute One-Twelve Point Three-One-Four-Three Sub-Three Sub-A. So there is no conflict of interest, and I want that on the record. There is also a suggestion that the city manager needs to sit down and discuss a settlement with the clerk of court to avoid court costs. The city manager has no authority to do that. That would have to be authorized by the council. In addition, this evaluation criticizes the city manager for five projects that were actually approved by the council, with all five council members voting in favor. So it's extremely unfair to be laying that on the city manager's doorstep.
Thank you. Further comments on the city manager's evaluation? I had one, but I'm not going to even bring it up because it's so untrue. I don't even want to get involved in it, to be honest with you. No further comments? Courtney, I'm going to say this. I know I don't write a lot on my evaluation, but we've talked probably too much every day almost. And I appreciate your hard work. And I really judge our city manager on a lot of other issues outside of the city. It's how people in the county who she deals with and works with on a daily basis perceive her. And I have yet to talk into anybody who has not said how wonderful it is to work with her. And Courtney, thank you very much. I know you helped me a lot. We have some great conversations, and I appreciate what you do. At this time, I'm going to open up for public comments on our Agenda Item and City Manager.
Ron Jagudis, resident Satellite Beach. I look at the city's, last meeting, I think it was, decided that none of the information as far as the detailed evaluations would be brought forward, nonetheless, it was decided now to bring it forward. My biggest concern is, and it was the prior meeting, is that council should be sitting down. And I don't think it would be an issue whether it's a closed-door session and bring it up eventually to citizens of a document, a document that is not antiquated. Times have changed. And I heard the comments that what worked twenty years ago will work now. And if I'm paraphrasing incorrectly, then please do correct me. But the issue is, times have changed. We've got iPads, we've got cell phones that are smart. We've got different educational tools at universities. We have a plethora of knowledge. And management techniques have changed. The world has changed as far as city management. Many principles remain, but evaluations have changed. I have one approved by the ICMA in my hands right now. And I question why city council did not sit down and take the time and look at some potential different formats that would not only aid the city manager, it would help the city manager as far as becoming a better city manager and help this community and this city's employees. Everyone would benefit to examine this. And I'm going to point at one example. Twenty years ago, you may have not needed a seatbelt in a car or airbags. You do now. Thank you.
Thank you. Floor is still open for public comment.
A fine long-term Satellite Beach citizen. Mr. Chairman, a member of council, we've already gone over some of the items. And I could go over item by item, but that's not necessary. I'm not feeling too ill. All one has to do is find a common denominator. If you find a common denominator, you would find a problem and hopefully come up with a solution. I think this negative evaluation, I do call it negative evaluation, I went through all five evaluations. I think this evaluation says more about the evaluator than it does about the city manager. I really do. To me, it appears that the evaluator is so detached from what the city manager does that she has misused this evaluation process. Made a statement about the city manager catering to a minority. Sitting on this council at the moment, there's four council members that were elected by a plurality. One council member was elected by a majority. At the last election, three of the, excuse me, two of the sitting members were elected by a plurality and one by a majority.
Excuse me. Gabe, I need you to stick to the question, not about the election and so forth. It needs to be concerning-
Okay.
-the city manager's evaluation.
This has to do with, this has to do with a comment made that she caters to a minority of the citizens. Well, the elected, the election proved that we have a plurality as far as the city manager's really is catering to all of the people of Satellite Beach, not just the minority.
Thank you, Gabe.
Basically, that's what the point I'm trying to make.
Okay.
She criticized the city manager for things that she-
Not to any one councilperson appointed to. Please stick to the evaluation of the city manager.
Evaluation of a city manager, as far as I'm concerned, is a travesty. I'm just wondering, and again, this goes with the evaluation, did this individual ever sit down with the city manager thirty days, ninety days prior, any time prior to the evaluation process and find, and either asked or showed her displeasure, or showed what improvements the city manager could make?
I thank you for your comments. The three-minute buzzer just rang, so I have to tell you, your time has expired.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any further public comment concerning this issue? Please let him-
Dale Abrams, resident. I'm going to read something that came from the ICMA regarding evaluations. It says, "All evaluations present, presented prior to the deadline identified on the cover page will be summarized into a performance evaluation to be presented by the governing body to the city manager as part of an agenda for the meeting indicated on the cover page." This is from the ICMA. I think everybody knows what the ICMA is. I believe our city manager is a member of the ICMA, correct? Okay. I have heartburn that she came to you, the city manager came to you, and said, "Okay, here's the form. Fill it out and get it back to me at such-and-such date." I believe the mayor and the council members are responsible for putting this together, okay? And I think going forward, you need to think about that, as far as that's concerned. I would like to know if we're on YouTube tonight. If we are, I suggest every citizen in this community to look at this agenda and read the evaluations that these council people and the mayor put together, okay? I find the mayor's evaluation quite interesting, and I also did a bunch of research on it today, and I found a lot of numbers that were very similar. I don't know if you folks talked to each other regarding the evaluations amongst each other, but I thought that that was really interesting. I suggest you look at the ICMA evaluation form.
Thank you. Further comments, please?
Steve Headley, resident. Two meetings ago, the meeting that you weren't here for, there was a discussion on whether to have the actual evaluations as part of being here. Mr. Brimer, Mr. Montanaro nodded and said they shouldn't. A statement later on, I believe Ms. Scott said the same thing. I said that, stood up in front of here, because I could see this coming. You could see this coming. You could see the evaluation of an employee being used as a political football. I don't care how you guys evaluate Ms. Barker. I really don't. You are her supervisors theoretically. If you're thrilled with her job, cool beans. If you're not thrilled with her job, cool beans. But this is the type of stuff that ends up dividing a city. It's preventable, and it shouldn't have been here. It just shouldn't. And just to comment on one thing, and I know this is going to get me in trouble, Ms. Scott says the comment, the council policy allows for corrections. It does. When citizens speak, does not give her the right to make that statement when other council people speak.
Thank you for your comments. Still open? Please.
David Schechter, president. She's a public employee. She works for you. My opinion, this ought to be a public document. I'm just going to screw you Steve over that. I think it's an open document. It's your evaluation. We ought to know what that is. That's what you've done. Once you accept the form, it's your form. It's not anybody else's form, whether you provided, one of you provided, or the attorney provided, or the city manager, or I provided it. Once you adopt that form, it's yours. You take responsibility for it. And that's one you chose to use, and that's what you chose to do. You have discussions that you want, but it's yours. It's not anybody else's. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further comment? Here are none. Bring it back to council. Any council further?
Yeah, I want to address a couple of statements that were made. The implication was that we have talked among ourselves on this evaluation. That's just flat-out false. And the statement that we don't have the right to correct errors made by other council members, it only relates to speakers, that's false. We not only have the right, we have the responsibility to correct misstatements of fact about this city every time we see them or hear them. And I take that responsibility very seriously.
Any further comments from council members?
Yep, I have a couple of comments. First of all, this form was adopted in nineteen ninety. We had this discussion when it first came out, the evaluation form, that I had no input. So to say just because you previously adopted it in the past doesn't mean that it was a form that I necessarily would have used, because we had no discussion regarding the evaluation form. There's been new councils, there's new things, and it should have been discussed and adopted by this council before it was sent out for any comments or statements. And there's just one other thing I want to read, and this is from our city charter. "No later than September fifteenth," and I assume that's of each year, "the city council shall complete an annual evaluation of the city manager and discuss it with him or her. The evaluation shall be a composite of all council members' evaluations and shall rate the city manager's performance in the areas of goals and objectives to satisfy the city council duties delineated in this charter, personal relationships, and beneficial changes to the city. The city council may complete additional evaluations whenever it deems appropriate." I just want to let people know that's in the charter. That, this evaluation should have been done by September fifteenth of last year, because she came into office in, or into her position of April, I believe, April fifteenth of last year. As far as the comments, there was no, she didn't call me to discuss my evaluation whatsoever. We could have sat down and talked about the issues. It's difficult to put it all in writing, especially in a format when you only have a few lines. And I think the evaluation is archaic. Again, it was adopted in nineteen ninety. We didn't discuss the evaluation form. My opinion is my opinion. I'm on city council, and it is what it is. And I don't think this city has any right to change anything that's in that evaluation form.
Okay, I don't believe anybody has changed anything in that form at all. Courtney, I know we talked about the date because of what the charter said, but your contract with the city has a different date, correct?
Yeah, my contract actually requires the evaluation to occur on the anniversary date, which is April thirtieth. So that's why I sent it out on March twentieth. And I sent that form out. I had received no comments from anybody about the form, or whether it was bad or good, or whether we wanted a different form, or should we send it back to council to talk about a different forms. And then, no comments like that ever, you know, came to my office. No one called me about it, so I assumed the form was okay because nobody said it different. I didn't receive your evaluation, Councilwoman Deanan, until June fourth. Most of the other, all the other council members, when they turned in their form, called me, said, "I have your evaluation ready. When can we meet to talk about it?" I spoke with each other council member for at least an hour or- I spoke with each other council member for at least an hour or so regarding my evaluation, some longer than others. And I kind of was expecting most of the comments that I received, because they talked to me about my performance throughout the year. I didn't get any of that with you, Councilwoman Dean, so I didn't schedule a meeting with you. And I have to say, most of the comments that you had in here were surprising to me, because I have not received any comments from you about any of it. But I do want to say that the next time my evaluation comes up, I have no problem using any form you want to use. Just let me know what form you want to use, and I'll hand it out to you. But I honestly, if I knew that there was an issue with the form, I would have brought it back to you, y'all. I could have decided what form you wanted to use, and we could have gone forward, but nobody had indicated any problems with the form in any respect at all.
Actually, at the meeting, when this came up, when I hadn't turned in my form, and I don't want to get into some of the reasons why I didn't turn in the form, because there are some issues going on with the water line breaking under my property, under my slab of my house, and so there's some pretty extraordinary things happening in my life which have delayed things, and this is the reason why I issued a fax instead of getting off the computer. We discussed it, and I expressed the fact that I didn't feel like I was a participant in generating that form. Mayor, you were absent, and they said, "This is the way we've always done it." So...
That was on May 21st?
In any event, I'm not going to split hairs over it. I think it was your choice to put it into, as an agenda item, and that's fine with me. I told you before, I was fine either way.
Thank you. Any further council comments? I just want to say this. I filled out quite a few of these forms. Excuse me, in the back of the room, that's an out-of-order. I don't need to hear from you, again, back there to hear you up here, because it interrupts the rest of the people in the audience. Thank you. I looked at the form. I filled out this form before. Courtney is an employee of the city council and for the city of Satellite Beach. And ma'am, you're excused.
Come on, yell at me.
I did.
Hey, you're doing it.
Thank you. And I apologize to the audience. I don't like doing that, but I feel that everybody has a right in the audience to hear what we have to say.
Maybe we need to get the mayor of Cocoa Beach down here, too, huh?
Anyway, the form to me is very adequate. It answers the questions that are asked, very much pertain to the city manager's position. And personally, I took it farther than this. I talk to people all the time, not only in the city, but really people in the county. And I feel very comfortable with the job Courtney has done. The form is fine. What's great about this form is you could add any page you want to this form with any questions you feel you would like to add to it and turn it in. The form goes to Lenore, and she tabulates everything. So to me, as mayor and have done this before, it works fine. You can throw any form out here. The form works good. You can always add stuff to it, and I think you're doing a great job. Any other comments?
Just to kind of piggyback on you, Mr. Mayor, you know, what I would say is if, and I've seen this form before, it is very broad. It allows you to make any comments on any number of areas that you want to make. It's a free-flow format, but it does give you some quantitative analysis so that you can tabulate and figure out where you go from there. What I would suggest, and just to suggest, Mr. Mayor, is if Courtney wants to take a look at the form, if other forms are out there, if you think this is antiquated and needs to be changed, bring it back to us. We'll talk about it. Other than that, I don't want to keep talking about this form. I'm done with it. We've done this enough. It serves the city well. If Courtney finds it doesn't serve the city well, then let us know, Courtney. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any further comments from council?
Yeah, are we doing the averaging, score averaging?
I think, if I'm not mistaken, she already did that.
125 or something.
It's 128 out of a possible 150.
Okay. One of these evaluations came in a month and a half late. The tally should be using the four scores that were received on time.
Any further comment on that issue? Jim, I'm going to ask you a question here, a legal question, because her contract with the city is different than the city charter. Where do we stand on the dates?
I'd have to look at the exact language, but if what I heard, if I heard what I heard correctly, it said that the evaluation shall occur on or before September of whatever date it was every year. So if you do it in April, then that's, or May or June, that's still before September. So it doesn't say it has to be on that date. It just says it has to be on or before that day.
And the charter also says, "Of all council members' evaluations." This is the charter. Pass that down, please, sorry.
I would like to, is there a provision that basically says somewhere that if it's not received by a certain date, it doesn't count? And if there isn't, then I think we should put something in wherever the language needs to go that says that, because if...
That goes to Jim, please.
If there's someplace that we can insert that language that clears this up, then I'd say we should do that. This is something that's already happened. If we were going to not accept it, we should have not accepted it when it was late and said, "It's not here, and we're going to move forward." But to do this after the fact, I think, if there's language somewhere that we can insert that says, "If it's not here by this date, it doesn't count," then I'm in favor of doing that.
It's not a matter of not including it. It's a public record. It's part of the evaluations. But the score, even Ms. Abrams read something from the ICMA that said the scores should include the evaluations that are received on time. And then the fifth evaluation can just be there with them, included in the evaluation pack.
Any further comment on this from...
No, I think we've covered it.
Hearing no further.
What are we going to do?
No second to that motion.
I'm sorry?
There's no second to the motion. We accept her...
What motion?
There was no motion?
There was no motion. It was a discussion.
A discussion? Well, I like things turned in on time, but obviously, there's nothing that mandated that to be on time in, you know, our discussion of this when it first started.
There's a, the contract, the employment contract, which we were a party to, says that it will be turned in by the anniversary date. That's a contractual obligation.
Okay. I'd have to ask, again, I'm going to go back to the city attorney on this issue.
Well, my initial reaction is, I mean, I'd have to look into it. I mean, I'm getting blindsided with this, obviously, but my initial reaction is a contract can't change a charter provision. So, I mean, I would have to go back and figure that out, but I mean, that's the one issue that I see that's an overriding issue, is, you know, normally, you know, a contract can't change a statute, it can't change an ordinance, it can't change a charter provision. So, and how they interplay is another matter, but that's how my, that would be my initial reaction to the question.
But the contract does not contradict the charter. The charter says, "By September 30." And the contract says, "By the anniversary date," and which the contract says is April 30. And so those are not in conflict. So both of them actually control.
And I said that earlier, but there's an overarching issue that you're bringing in there, which is, does the other, does the tardy evaluation count in the process?
That's not covered anywhere.
I agree with that. And that's what I, I don't, there's some language in the charter provision that would make me think that you still have to consider it, but how you deal with that is another matter.
My feeling is we don't have, is to accept it. I don't like that. It was late. I think it's wrong. We all have deadlines that we should adhere to. We didn't set this forth to begin with, and we've talked this a lot. If we want to change the process, I think, you know, we come up with that with an agenda item, set it, and go with it. But at this time, as much as I would like to not accept it because it wasn't in on time, my feeling is we need to accept it as part of it, because it's not spelled out. And that's generally...
I just want to, I don't want to have to do this again next year. So I would like to have wherever the language needs to go in, it stipulates that it has to be in on time, and if it's not, it doesn't count. So let's just make it clean for the next time somebody else has to do this.
My question, I guess, Jim, is council can accept it on any date we want. So, I mean, we could accept, could have accepted it June 1st and just, that would have been it. What was included in the packet or the information available to council effective June 1st is what we accepted. Motion, second, and vote. In other words, so if something comes in June 4th, that is not considered in the tabulation. Is that, would that cover it?
There is a provision in the charter right now that says, "The evaluation shall be a composite of all council members' evaluations." So I need to figure out how to address your question in the context of...
But that can't be an opening date, Jim.
And I'm not fussing about that. I'm just, you're going to...
I could have made a motion back June 1st, that let's accept what we have and move forward at this point in time. And we probably could have, might have. I don't know what would have happened, but that would have...
Correct.
That's my point.
But getting back to the other issue is, I believe that you can establish a process to address non-timely evaluations being turned in, whatever date they are, but, you know, however you establish it.
Right. We don't have that at this point.
You don't have it right now.
My feeling is, move on, and if we want to establish this at some time, we'll do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Recommended action is for council to review the report, which we've done. Courtney, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to really quickly say, you know, we've done a lot in this past year. I don't think I've ever worked so hard in my life. But I wanted to thank my department heads and my staff. I think we have the greatest staff in the world, not that I'm biased or anything. And I have a great relationship with council, and I have a really wonderful relationship with a lot of our volunteers, and I really appreciate everything you all do. And it's been a great year. I've been really enjoying working in my hometown. It's been a lot of fun, and I appreciate the opportunity, and I want to thank you.
I was going to mention the column.
Oh, yeah. Tomorrow, I will have a guest column in the Florida Today outlining everything we've done. I thought it was a good thing to do for, you know, after a year of being here, and it's quite an extensive list. It was hard to get it in 650 words, but we did it. So it's going to be a nice highlight of the year of everything we've completed.
Thank you. Mark, you have...
Just one last thing. I know I said this at the meeting last week, but great job on the beach caster. Just excellent. A lot of good feedback I've gotten on that, so thank you to you and your team for that, too.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And moving on to agenda item 10, agenda items for the next regular council meeting.
Thank you, council, mayor. We will hopefully have an easement agreement with Mr. Allison. We're still working on that. We will have the second reading for the ordinance you passed today on first reading. We will also be adding a resolution that will have the application for that. And then we will be discussing our comprehensive plan amendments for the complete streets policies that the CPAB has been working on.
Okay. Again, any item that a council person would like to have on the agenda, time permitting from staff to put it there, please contact Courtney or myself to have it there. One thing, because we're not going to meet, and we have some workshops, we have one on the 25th, correct? And then we're going to have one on 23rd, is it?
Yes.
Of July?
Correct.
And that one's going to be about boards. A recommendation, everyone, is if you want to have input to it, please get your input to the staff beforehand, so they can get it and have it, and when it comes in our packet, we have the ability to study it. So it's just a suggestion, since we're not going to meet until July 16th. Any further agenda items at this time? Okay. Moving on to agenda item number 11, appointments to boards.
Move to reappoint Pat Patton as an alternate member of the library board.
Second.
Okay. I got a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion? Lenore?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Lenore. Moving on to agenda item 12.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 21st regular meeting, the June 4th workshop meeting, and the June 4th regular meeting as submitted.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Gott.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lenore?
Yes.
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 Yes. Any further business before council? Remember, we have the workshop next week. And hearing none, meeting's adjourned.